Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Council's Study Session. And we're going to start out with a presentation from Finance. I say that, but we're waiting for Chief Financial Officer Tanya Wallace. So it's been a little time, so maybe we'll go right into our presentation from Spokane Resource Center. Who's going to take the lead on that? Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Dawn Carver. Can you hear me just fine?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Am I coming in clearly?
You are now, yes.
You are now, do work. All right. It looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Okay, can everyone hear me just fine now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Sorry, we're having trouble on our end. All right. Is Tim Sigler, are you with us?
I don't see him.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and start with Adam. So thank you, Council President, members of council, for having us here today. I'm Dawn Carver, I'm the Chief Operations Officer with the Spokane Workforce Council, and a founding member of the Spokane Resource Center. With me here today, hopefully I see Jen Morris. We'll be having Jen Morris, who's the Director of the Resource Center, and Shannon Brundle, who's the Program Manager for the Spokane Workforce Council. Make sure, I'm gonna check and make sure that we have our team here. All right, well, I see Jen, so we'll continue on. Together, we worked with Tim Sigler and others at the city to create and launch the Spokane Resource Center, which was officially launched with a grand opening in April 2019. It was originally called the Envision Center, you might have heard it by that name. And it was called that because it's recognized as an Envision Center by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Today, I hope if technology allows, I'm going to show you a video, let you hear directly from a customer about his experience with the Resource Center. And then I want to provide some highlights about our amazing team and the site, the Spokane Resource Center site. We're going to see if we can get technology to cooperate, and I'm going to try to show you a video. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Next challenge, we'll see if everyone can watch the video together. Doesn't look like it. Hmm. That is unfortunate. We'll keep seeing if we can find the video.
Dawn, Hannah Lee can probably play it off her computer here, if you want to.
That would be wonderful.
Unshare that.
It looks like it's loading.
Oh, there it goes. Okay.
Oh, I think it might. Oh, there it goes.
Yeah, okay.
Once you have technology all figured out, right when you need it, it doesn't work, right? Okay. Sorry about that, I hope this works. We'll try one more time, and if we can't get it to play, I'll send it out to you to watch.
I'm actually someone who, you know, have a lot of kind of horrible decisions behind me. And it's cost me a lot of years in prison. I've spent my almost my entire life in prison. And this is my last chance. I have already advocated for my three different programs, and the third program, I don't even know the name of it, it's just been so seamless that I've gone from resource to resource to resource. And like I said, I've made a lot of bad decisions. My one best decision I've ever made was to walk in the front door of the Resource Center.
I hope that everyone was able to hear that. That was George, and we have had a great time getting to know George and help him through his transition. He is successfully employed, he's extremely happy with his new career. And we have kept in touch with him, I just talked to him the other day. And I want to thank all staff at the Spokane Resource Center and all the partners that makes stories like George's possible. I'm gonna check in to make sure everyone can hear me just fine and see my screen still. Yep, okay. So a little bit about the history of the Spokane Resource Center. We learned in late 2018 that we were selected to be one of 18 sites around the country to operate a pilot site known as Envision Centers. And this designation was given by the United States Housing and Urban Development Department. And we were thrilled, we partnered with the city of Spokane and Spokane Housing Association and others to start our journey together to create a social service one-stop. And what I can tell you now, after launching on a, what we'll call it, a shoestring budget, and very little staff, I'm so proud to say that because of the generous partnership with the city, who paid for the rent at the Resource Center for us since 2018, we have since served 6,000 customers through the Resource Center. I'll bring you throughout the journey with us. In July, by July 2019, we worked together with Pioneer Human Services and others, and we'd raised $3.2 million. We did, I failed to tell you, but we did quietly open in January of 2019. We started with two staff, and by April of 2019, pulled together many community partners who were available on-site. We provided a large grand opening, and then by July, of course, had raised the $3.2 million. By August 2019, we were already recognized as a national leader in best practice by HUD. And we were honored to host Secretary Ben Carson and Representative Catherine McMorris Rogers for a tour. We have since been contacted from sites around the country wanting to know how do we operate a partnership and a site that is so successful. We're happy to help others along their journey, and we're currently working with a site in northern Idaho that's hoping to launch as an Envision Center as well. We currently are in virtual service operation. We closed the public in March of '20, of course, by governor's orders. Several of us remained on-site. We do have staff here on-site who are delivering virtual services. We receive currently somewhere between 100 and 150 calls per day. Again, we've served 6,000 customers, and we will continue to provide virtual services and in-person services just as quickly as we can. We've also worked together with the city and others to now operate on a budget of $6.7 million. And we provide services, you can see to the far right, in areas of homelessness, justice involvement, serving and focusing on low-income populations, veterans, retirees, individuals with disabilities, and those with limited English proficiency. We have 18 partners on-site, and I'm also proud to say that we've launched a clothing closet, and we've outfitted 250 individuals for their first day of work or for an interview. It's a boutique-style experience, so customers, when we're open to the public, get approximately a 30-minute appointment with us, and we can help them get prepared, both with the clothing they might need or hygiene products, we also keep those on-site. Here's a list of our sponsors, both executive sponsors and then our partner agencies. We could not have made the Spokane Resource Center possible without the city of Spokane. Thank you, sincere thank you to City Council and to our partners at the city of Spokane for working with us to make this site possible, to the Spokane Housing Authority and to the Board of the Spokane Workforce Council that believes in this project and allowed us to move forward. It would not be possible to operate the site without the partner agencies. You can see them listed there. We have partners that come in from across the community to provide the various services that we talked about, and many of whom are writing grants on behalf of the Resource Center as well. So it's an absolutely fabulous partnership. Here's an overview of our funding and sponsors. We've listed all of the grants that we've brought in, and that's both on the right and the left. We're currently managing in partnership with Pioneer Human Services and others, $7.6 million. All of this money goes directly to client services and to staff. We've not been able to secure any support for the operations and the rent, and we're hopeful that we can have a continued conversation with the city on what a partnership with you might look like going forward. The city so far has been very generous to the Resource Center, we appreciate it very much. We've received, as you can see, funding to pay for the rent of the space. Really appreciative of what's most important right now to many in our community, and that's housing support. And that's come through the TRBA grant and the CARES Act grant. Together, we've served 222 individuals so far with those funding streams. Thank you so much for supporting the community and partnering with us to get that funding out the door. And we've also partnered with the city to implement CDBG funding, Community Development Block grant funding, which allowed us to fund the operations of the site initially. Since then, the Spokane Workforce Council has raised money to continue the operating of the site, which covers staff funding, but again, we were not yet able to find funding to support the rental component. We received a lot of questions about our response, our COVID-19 response, since we've had to transition to virtual services. We have not stopped working, we've been open every day and every hour, and been working much longer hours, of course, knowing that the community needs our support now more than ever. You can see here a list of enhanced services that we've started offering since we transitioned to virtual services. These include an updated website, which we keep updated every single day with the newest information about community resources. Several of us not only remained on-site, but have been working the front doors since March 17th, when we were asked to close. We quickly realized we needed to become a food distribution site, and within several weeks, we had boxes of food delivered to us, and that was in partnership with Second Harvest. So any member of the community that was informing us of any financial troubles they were having while they were maybe waiting for their unemployment insurance, or they were looking for work, while they were currently laid off, we were able to connect them with information about food distribution sites, as well as send them away with one or more boxes of food to provide for their family. We've also enhanced our technology, we've updated phone lines. Again, we've transitioned from 20 to 30 calls per day, most of our services will be in person, to 100 to 150. On a high-volume day, we'll receive 250 calls. So we've enhanced our phone line. We provide information about access to Wi-Fi hotspot, and we have continued and will continue to look for additional grant funding to support members of our community. I want to again thank the city of Spokane. We could not have launched the Spokane Resource Center without your assistance. I'm hopeful and I'm respectfully requesting an ongoing conversation of how we might partner to work with you going forward for the rental component. And we at the Workforce Council will continue to write grants and operating the site, and will support the site in any other way that we can. I'd like to open it up for questions.
Questions from council members?
This is Karen Stratten. So I just have a comment, and there's one thing that Dawn is not telling you, and that is that she is very generous with her cell phone number. And I want everybody to know, I don't know if you're getting calls, but I've had calls, one in particular, somebody that is high maintenance, needing a lot of help. Every time I called, Dawn has answered her phone, she has connected this person with Resource, and she has followed up with me, and I so appreciate it. So I just want to call her out because I know how hard it is to have that phone with you all the time and taking calls all day, and then to get one from somebody, a council member. I've got somebody that needs help, and I have no idea what to do with them. So thank you, Dawn, you guys are doing great work. And they also, Dawn, can you talk a little bit about, you can loan computers, or you can loan laptops to people, or you can get them access to laptops for those that don't have them?
Well, first, thank you, Councilmember Stratten. You have been working very hard on behalf of the community, I know we've had several phone calls, and we are happy to help. We know that the community, many members of our community, have been extremely challenged throughout the pandemic, and that is exactly what the Resource Center is here to do. We're happy to step up in any way possible, and one of those ways was in partnership with Workforce Spokane. And that's where we were able to secure the laptop for the individual with whom I believe you're referring to. So Worksource, in partnership with the Spokane Workforce Council, invested in 50 laptops, as well as mobile hotspots. And they were able to check, they are able to check those out to members of the community actively looking for work who have no other means to connect to technology and are enrolled and engaged in Worksource and Workforce Services. That is in partnership with the Resource Center. There is a co-enrollment process between the Resource Center and Worksource that we've been able to work out. And the individual that you're referring to was able to get a computer and maybe even had that delivered to his house because of his particular situation. However, for the most part, we're not able to do that. But when we can help someone who's in a dire situation, we'll do everything we can to assist.
Are there, Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Could you speak to me what your partnership is with Community Court? Since the list of services you provide, many of those people fall into that category.
Yeah, Jen, I think this might be a better question for you to address. Would you mind taking that on?
Yes, sorry, thank you. Yeah, so our partnership with Community Court really is that we're here for them to refer over to us. So we obviously don't go there and sit with them in the resource room where Community Court is held. However, we get a lot of folks that come over here from Community Court because they're told, hey, you know, they have housing stuff over there, they also have reentry and justice services over there. So you can get kind of a plethora of services in the one-stop. And so because we've got so many of the similar agencies here daily, they're not restricted to just the one or two days of Community Court, but they can come in any day. And we also work with the courts, not just Community Court, but the courts in general, so that if they have someone that comes in, in, let's say, Family Court or Drug Court, then they refer them over to us. And then we've got a partnership to where we can let them know, like, hey, this person did come because they have our intake forms, so then they can know if the person came and actually saw us and what services they received, so they can report back to the court and back to the judges.
Are there questions from council members? I have a couple, but if anyone else, I'll let you go first. Yeah, okay, so I have a little bit, some questions, kind of about the current space and the cost, which, just my perception, is a lot of space and it's costly. So I'm just wondering, are we leasing it directly from the owner of the building, or are we sort of a sub-tenant of Worksource or Workforce Council? What's, who are we paying rent to? And I should know this, but I'm just asking.
I will do my best to answer that question, and I will also refer you to the best contact at the city. So the lease is held by the city of Spokane, and I am unsure if you work through a management company or directly with the building owner. You are correct that it's a lot of space, but I will assure you that we, when we are open, utilize every square foot, every square foot of the building. So when we are able to see our customers, and I actually want to stop there to say, we have tried twice to open back up, we are committed to being open. We know this population needs in-person services, and that's what we want to be doing. We brought back a larger staff two times in an attempt to open our site back up and to get them prepared, and we had COVID virus outbreaks both times, one of which, one of our staff members was seriously ill. And because we were unsuccessful the first two times, we are using the space now. I'm in the Resource Center, joining you from the Resource Center today. So we do have a number of staff here, it's imperative that they work together in teams, so they are working from here. We've had to reduce the number of staff who can be here, so that we can ensure proper social distancing. We have a clothing closet that is operational, that seems hard because it's a boutique-style experience, but we've maintained the donation process, as well as both Jen and I as well as Shannon, who I know has joined us, will come upstairs, get clothing for customers who are at the front door, and give them access to work boots or hard hats, construction vests, first-day-of-work outfits, as well as interview clothing. We also have quite the space dedicated now to hygiene products. We have a lot of individuals who come to us, and because they've had difficulty accessing a shower, or we had a gentleman here yesterday, all of his belongings had been stolen while he was sleeping outside the night before, and he had absolutely nothing. And so we were able to connect him with what he needs. I've been out in the last six months since I've been here, countless blankets, backpacks, boxes of food, socks, shoes, coats. We're starting to see requests for coats and scarves and hats and that sort of thing. So we are utilizing that space. The space I'm in here today, the Workforce Council was going to lease, and we partnered with a large national financial institution who will be contributing to the cost of the space that we're in. We had hoped to open this as an apprenticeship center. However, that very much requires in-person services. So we have a virtual apprenticeship center, and we have since transitioned this space into one for high-quality video calls. We're constantly reaching out to funders and partners, and we want a space that we can interact with the community in a quality way. And so now it's more of an audiovisual technical space that the Spokane Workforce Council is supporting. We also have an Equity Center, an Equity and Inclusion Center. It's a large space, but we've held, along with many of you, some phenomenal events and trainings and learning opportunities in our Equity and Inclusion Center. And that space is open and available to anyone who wants to host meetings or trainings and provide education on equity and inclusion. It's been an extremely valuable space. And in partnership with the Cash Coalition and United Way and local financial institutions, we launched a Financial Stability Center, so one of the spaces is dedicated just to serve those who are struggling financially and are interested in finding their way to a better, more stable financial path. In that space, and now virtually, we offer financial classes and workshops. We're instructing individuals on how to do all things from balancing a checkbook to creating a budget. And we also offer free tax preparations for individuals in the community as well. We also have another space that's dedicated to employment, it's a classroom, where we offer employment workshops and coaching. And we have another space dedicated to individuals who are leaving incarceration, and it's a space designed just for them to help them go through a six-week process of returning to the community and ensuring that they're on a pathway that they don't face the recidivism challenge that so many do. And then we have a large open space in which we host about 25 staff and 18 partner agencies, as well as others. So when we had the free cellphone service available within our community, we were giving out cellphones through the Resource Center. And we have insurance companies who were providing information about free health care and access to the state health insurance, and helping individuals on-site complete applications to get health insurance. And we have a team in that same space that's dedicated to pre-employment services, where we've served hundreds and hundreds of individuals who wanted to return to work or wanted to excel in their career, but they maybe just weren't quite ready. And that team helps them get prepared to access Worksource services and really be ready for those services. We have another team that helps individuals with their medical needs. We have CHAZ located on-site. He might, the CHAZ representative here has to be one of the most amazing individuals on the planet. He helps Marshalese customers, I believe he's helped 100 Marshalese-looking customers who were having challenges with the unemployment system or filling out job applications. So that's happening out of here as well, and he's here most days. We have another team that's working on housing support, and they are beyond busy as you can imagine, and they're helping to get the funding that you've given to us out the door. So it is a large space, but I will tell you it's a very well-utilized space. And I am unsure how to operate a site that has so much to offer in a space that is smaller than what we have here.
So there's been some talk about trying to find space closer to the courthouse complex. It's a little easier to get to transportation-wise and a little closer walk from the places where people are justice-involved and being directed to services. Assuming we could get you the equivalent amount of space, how does that impact your services? I'm imagining that you have lots of other duties yourself, and I'm not sure about Jen as well, beyond the Spokane Resource Center. So how would that challenge you if we found sufficient space closer to the courthouse complex?
Sure. Well, as far as challenging Jen and myself, we love to challenge one, and we would never suggest that a location be somewhere to make it easier on staff or on ourselves. So do know that. We believe in the location, we are of course open if the city decides to move somewhere else. I would say, though, however, just know that one of the most important, and hands-down most important features, is the partnership with Worksource. And that is, when customers come here, we can help them get prepared with everything they need to go to work. So we can get them the health insurance that they need, we can get them the mental health services that they need, the clothing, the pre-employment services, justice involvement, everything they might need to be successful in the working world. And then we send them downstairs, they're already enrolled through our programming into Worksource. They go downstairs, and they continue to have an entire campus here that works to support them. We have a business services center here on campus. We also have a youth employment center for young adults ages 16 to 24. So we will find that families take advantage of all of the services on-site. So my hope is we could have a continued conversation about just how valuable and rich this campus is with the Resource Center and with Worksource and all the other offerings. But I appreciate you listening to my piece on why I think the location is currently working. But I, I appreciate you listening to, to my piece on why I think the location is currently working.
This is Councilmember Cathcart. Just real quick, how many folks come in to either WorkSource or the Envision Center? And, and in the same kind of appointment or the same day, they're, they're visiting both places?
I can say a lot, but I, I would like to give you a more specific number or count. Jen, do you feel a better clip to take on that response?
But it's, I mean, it's fairly frequent. It's not an infrequent thing.
Oh, it's not infrequent. Yeah. And, and not only are we taking folks down there and doing a soft handoff, they're bringing folks up to us who are in need of additional services in order to become more able to be employed. And so the handoffs, the handoffs that we both do are so important and there are so many. It, it really happens almost daily several times.
Throughout the day, you'll see WorkSource customers getting outfitted for work. You'll see Spokane Resource Center customers who didn't feel like they were ready to go downstairs. One of the most important aspects to me has been the Resource Center customers who have mentioned, hey, I might go back to work and here's what I've been doing. And then Jen and her team can say, well, gosh, you know, let's go down to WorkSource. But have you thought about training? And so George that you saw in the video, and Jen, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this, went back to work as a, with a CDL and needed to be trained. And WorkSource has access to training phones. And so not only do we hear a customer who might say, hey, I'm struggling financially, we give them access to everything the Resource Center has to offer. But then they get access to the 60 staff that work at WorkSource, which includes the team that can help analyze where current employment, where someone's current employment skills might be, provide assessments, and then connect them with a variety of additional workshops and then access to training supports as well.
I might have said, but, and I missed it. But on, like, the average day, how many clients come into the Envision Center?
So it's a little bit, right? So prior, Jen, you'll have to give me the, the numbers. I believe we were running at 85, 100 per day. But please correct me if I've spent a long, 85, 100 in your head per day. We also have both classrooms as well as members of the community utilizing our space. And that number does change. So it depends what we're offering onsite. If we had free cell phones, you would see a line out the door first thing in the morning. Free tax preparation was set to be a highly thought-after activity as well. And then we host meetings and conferences and training topics on equity inclusion, as I've mentioned. We will also have some days where there's workshops in the pre-employment classrooms, the financial stability classroom and the justice involved classroom. So you could have a completely full center. I know that sometimes you walk in here and this may have happened to you and you go, oh, my gosh, there's hardly anything happening here. But I assure you that that was just a small portion of the day and it's a very, very busy center. Since March 17th, when we closed, we did take a, there was a dip in customers calling. And that was the same across our entire campus excluding those calling about questions with unemployment insurance. Then, then the calls have picked up, as I've mentioned, to 100, 150 per day on average with a height of 250. And we know that those would all be in-person customers or the majority of, of which would be in-person customers if we're allowed to, you know, to, to open our doors. And so, you know, somewhere between 85 before the pandemic and then again 250 now accessing us virtually.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. And I hear that. So what type of data do you keep? Are you keeping data really on utilization of the center and the classes, occupancy, really to help us support sustaining that location where it's at? I love the anecdotal stories, but this is a data-driven organization. So what, what could come before us that would help us in our decision-making?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll give some background and then I'll let you know when we do have. One of the hopes is that the, the city's HMIS system would be updated to allow us to enter data into that platform. And that wasn't something that for reasons that I'm unsure of, I maybe just did not keep up with the process, that that didn't occur. And so when, when we were challenged to incorporate 18 different agencies without a data platform, Jen and her team had to quickly find new ways of tracking data. So what you will find is we have information on all of the various funding sources which require data entry into 10 or more data systems. But we also, Jen keeps track of, of the data. We have not been asked to keep track of any specific data set. And if you have any request, please let us know. We would be absolutely happy to report that back to you. If you're interested in knowing the number of customers that go from WorkSource upstairs, we had not been informed that that would be something that would be of interest. And so I don't know if that's something that we've kept track of other than seeing the, the flow and knowing clients personally who are going upstairs and downstairs. Jen, do you want to talk a bit about what you are tracking? And then we can see if there's other information that the council is interested in us to begin recording.
Sure. So currently we, I've taken all the reports that I have to do quarterly. So the City HUD, Second Harvest, all the, I think I've got like nine of them that I have to report out on. And I've taken all of those and made the intake form. So every person that walks in the door completes a, a full sheet intake form. When they return, they complete a half sheet. So we know they're returners, so then we would count them as a returner instead of a unduplicated number. We, we track their age, where in the city they live or the county, if they're a veteran, their race, gender, how many people are in the house, if they're housed, if they're not. If they are housed, how are they housed? Are they, are they on Section 8? Do they just have low-income housing? Do they not receive any assistance and they're, they're able to pay? We also track what services they're currently enrolled in. So are they receiving TANF or food benefits or Medicaid, Medicare, HEN, ABD? I mean, we, we have the, a whole gamut of different services that are provided here. But then also that we want to know so that if they're not getting, say, food benefits, we can talk to them about that. And that would be one extra thing then that we could provide them with while they're here. We also track where they heard about the Resource Center and then also what information or services that they're, they're coming in today to seek. So, so we do, you know, we, we have a lot of that. That's the data that we track. It's really about why are you here? What services do you want? That way we can tailor what we're doing as well. Because if, if we start getting folks who don't need medical insurance, let's say, then maybe we need to bring something else in, in that place or in addition to. Maybe there's a need that we need to be bringing in. And that would be something that we would address at that time. And then we also track income, so what their income levels are.
I will also add, excuse me, I'm going to echo. We see the location of the center. We were able to raise the, the, I don't know, the 7.6, the Workforce Council brought in about 6, 6.5, I believe, 6.2, 6.2 million dollars in resources. And I, I, that was leveraged support, if you will, because we're located on a workforce campus. So the majority of that funding is workforce funding, the pieces that are not, but the housing funding, of course. And the majority of, of the employment funding is because we offer pre-employment services. We're a certified WorkSource site up here at the Resource Center and because we're on the WorkSource campus. So I will hope consideration could be given. I did not know there was any conversation about moving the site, so that's good to know, thank you. I would hope consideration could be given into how important it is to our funders and potential funders of how much we can leverage here on the campus. And would our funding ability be reduced? Or would that funding then just need to instead go to the Resource Center if it was in another part of town? Would we need to put it back into, to WorkSource rather than into the Resource Center? Which would be unfortunate to me because the pre-employment component is so important. I hope we are able to take that into consideration as well.
Yeah. So yeah, and I'm not trying to spring surprises on you. But it's really good that we're talking with you. Probably we should have had this conversation a year ago. So it sounds like you're doing really good things, so I'm happy about that. I wanted to know a little more about, I mean, the, the model. I was so excited about when folks conceived it and as you're implementing it. But essentially, in my mind, the model is you have one place, you have lots of nonprofits that are supposed to serve this population anyway. They should be serving this population. And instead of serving it individually, serially at their various brick-and-mortar locations, they're coming to your place and doing it all at once. But in, in, several times that I've been there and also just in my work for nonprofits in the past, it seems like it's a little challenging to train them and acculturate those nonprofits to, how do they work outside their normal box? And how do they not feel like it's a problem for them to come there? How do they fit that and incorporate their daily work into a new location and sync up their data and all those types of things? So I'm just wondering now, we're a couple of years into this, how that, if you can give us a little bit about which organizations have really fit in well and what you're doing differently to help coach them along so that it's really seamless for them to do that?
Thank you for that question. Yeah, it raises a really good point. It is asking a lot of our community partners to leave a location where they have management and they are paying for rent. But what we have seen is the amazing, amazing partners that have committed to being here have all found value in, in doing so. Value for their staff, if there's a wide opportunity for cross-training. There is no better way to learn about the resources within the communities than to work with 25 other professionals that, that have access to different information and different resources. So that's been invaluable. And then also when the, when the agencies sent staff down and they saw just how important it was for clients to have access, and, and George talked about it in, in the video. You know, he would have went to a single nonprofit and asked for the one specific service that he needed. And when he came to the Resource Center, that's what he thought he was going to get. But the staff here work in functional teams, which is one of the more critical components of the Resource Center. So we don't just have 18 agencies sitting in cubicles, but we have them designed by teams. And so you'll have a team, a housing team, which is represented by various community agencies as well as a staff person from one agency that has access to various funding supports. For example, some of the CARES Act money and the TRVA Act money was given to career path services through our organization, a large portion of it. And you'll have a staff member there who has the ability to offer pre-employment services out of our Economic Security for All grant, which came through the governor's office, as well as then co-enroll someone into funding for TRVA or CARES Act. And then we have that same person has the ability to enroll into what's called the BFIT funding stream through DHS. And so one person can give the comprehensive services as well as walk that person then over to someone from Catholic Charities or to CHAZ. They can get their insurance taken care of here and they could get access to financial resources. What we have found, and it's been surprising to me personally, is the customers will come spend all day with us here. They want to know what other services do we offer? And the staff themselves have contributed to the cost of coffee that's put out front. So we have customers that will sit here, talk to each other. It's also become quite the place, I'm impressed with, the social engagement factor. And then want to learn more and what workshops can they take? And what's, what's next on, you know, on the docket for what the Resource Center is going to be offering? So I find it absolutely invaluable to have the housing team, the pre-employment team, the justice team. And I, I have worked in environments, I've worked for nonprofits locally as well, amazing nonprofits. And that wasn't my experience. It was more what, you know, it was about the grants that we had at the time or the resources that we had at the time. But when a staff person represents an organization here or an agency here, they get to bring all of the knowledge as well as the support from that agency and then share that with others here. So it really is a unique model. And as I mentioned, one that is recognized, we're recognized as the best practice model across the country. So we get phone calls all day long asking us the same thing. How do agencies feel about this? And, and I'll tell you, we've all, we have still have the same model at WorkSource and at Next Generation Zone located on a campus. At first, agencies are hesitant or they're concerned that they'll lose their individual identity. And once they get integrated into the site, which is led by a one-stop, a one-stop campus operator and myself, who, who've been managing sites like this for quite a long time, we can make sure that their individual agency identity is maintained while the resources they bring to the table can be shared and then provided through cross-training to other staff. Jen, would you like to say how agencies are feeling any more than I've already addressed?
Yeah, one thing additionally to that that's really nice is that when staff come here, the, the frontline staff, they're really integrated into our family. So everyone here is, works with each other, there's no silos. You know, in the past, it was always, you know, oh, this is my client. Like, I can't let this person go and, well, I don't want to co-enroll because then you'll get the number and I won't get the number. It became a number thing. Where here, it's not that anymore. It's, it's a person. That person needs the assistance. And if there's three different agencies that can provide for that one person, then all three of those agencies will provide for that person. And so everyone works so well together here. When we do receive, you know, when we do have a new staff member from an agency that comes in, we welcome them. They are, they're given an orientation as to what we do here at the SRC. And then they're introduced to all the other agencies. I ask them to, to go around to the other agency staff that are here, to talk with the other agencies and find out what they do so they can know the, the crossovers. And then how we can refer back and forth between the functional teams. So it's not so much that the agency, when somebody walks in here and says, I need goodwill, we say, well, what is it that you're wanting from goodwill? Well, I need housing and I know they have a HEN program. Well, that's, yes, they do and we can definitely get you over there. But let's also have you meet with our SNAP representative that's here that does housing services as well. So we can go multiple directions with someone. Because they don't know, they may not know that other agencies provide that. So it's, it's really quite seamless when new staff come in, when we've brought in new agencies. And, and it's, it's just been very seamless. And everybody just seems to want to help. And they're not as concerned as the, of the number because they are receiving their numbers. They're still enrolling people, they're getting folks that are here. And that's really still important to them and important to us that folks are being enrolled. And so they're, they are receiving many things from all of us that are here.
Great. So thanks so much, Dawn and Jen and Shannon. I, I can just speak for myself. You really painted a vivid picture and an updated picture for me. I really appreciated that. And so I think what would be most helpful for us is if you just sent us a brief letter promptly, making your ask. It's budget season for us right now. And, and can you just include, I know you've, you've kind of listed it on the screen, but just include who the partner agencies are that are showing up in the Resource Center, both the WorkSource campus folks and then the other, you know, SNAP and those CHAZ people as well? So we know who's providing services on a regular basis. And that will help us. But again, I thought this was a fabulous idea to the beginning and I've heard a lot more about how you've really carried it through. And so I'm really more optimistic and encouraged than I was when I started today. So you, you've done your work well, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing us to be here and to join you. We love talking about the Resource Center. I will say, I've opened several sites and I'm not probably supposed to say this and I imagine you're televising this, but the Resource Center is one of my most favorite. I'll put it like that. This is a very, very special place with an amazing team. Jen Morris is a wonderful leader. All of the partners here are beyond amazing. And we could not have done this without the city, without the council, without Tim Siegler and support from your CHHS department. So thank you again for, for listening to us and thanks for your continued support.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Tanya Wallace is with us. And I believe you have a presentation for us.
Thank you, Council President, and very sorry for my delayed response onto this agenda. I just want to take a few minutes to talk briefly about the decision- I just want to take a few minutes to talk briefly about the decision that we have to extend the expiration date of our taxes and licensing on the for-hire drivers. And that is in a large part of, we started to work down the path of providing this service online because City Hall is still closed, and we wanted to use Exela, which also supports our development services team and a few other city services. And when we got into that project, unfortunately, the configuration was going to be a lot more challenging than what we started with. And a lot of these licenses will expire on October 31st. So with the extension of COVID, and we're still in Phase 2 and City Hall being closed, we decided to extend those through June 30th of 2021 and take a little more time to really open up Exela and provide this online tool in the future to our customers. So with that, are there any questions, City Councilwoman?
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, hey, Tanya. So is it essentially going to be an 18-month term? Or are they going to have to pay for a full year in June and then another full year in October?
We're going to prorate that for them because we are also working with the new ordinance where we've kind of changed the due date, so they're not all due on October 31st and want to stagger those out. We're working on a staggering program, but it'll be prorated.
Okay. And so, but essentially, it's going to be just like a delay in receiving those funds?
Correct. Because they can't come into City Hall.
Based on our last known number of for-hire drivers, what would be that amount of revenue that we would expect?
That is a great question, Councilmember, and I will have to research that and get back to you. I do not know the answer at this moment.
I guess I'm just, where I'm going is I wonder if there's an opportunity to forgive some or all of this delay. I know those for-hire drivers are struggling pretty good right now. So anyway, I just think it'd be something to look at.
We can bring that report back to the council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton.
Hey, Tanya, I'm sorry. So you would extend the expert, or you would extend it to December 2021?
We're extending it through June 1st, 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Tanya, how does the fact that people can't come to City Hall right now, how does it affect new for-hire drivers?
It has a similar effect. They're submitting things through the mail, but we are struggling a little bit in meeting those new drivers. And not having the online tool is not ideal.
So technically, they can still apply, it's just harder and it takes longer, essentially?
Yes, sir.
And what, I don't think you said this, but maybe you did, and I just missed it. When do you expect the Exela option to be workable?
That is a great question. We did change the timeline a little bit. We were very aggressive in trying to stand this up so that we could support online payment processing, given the October 31st deadline. When we got into it, it was going to cause some significant impact to our development services program, which already uses this and has it online. So right now, we've readjusted, and we anticipate another three months to bring it online. But we added a little bit of cushion on the extension of this due date to June 1st, just to give us a little more time in case we're not quite ready in three months. But the team is actively working on it, and we're actually planning on bringing a report to the December FNA Committee for an update on where we are in online payment, not just for this program, but for a few other programs too, just as an effort to serve our citizens better and more, oh, what's the word, conveniently.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this update? All right. And I'm assuming that you'll have a communications plan to let the world know.
Oh, definitely. That is part of the entire project management. In fact, we assigned a project manager from our Office of Performance Management because this was going to be so outward-facing and was going to require some strong communication with our for-hire drivers. So letters are in the wings, waiting, pending this notification to you, Councilmembers.
Great. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Tanya, just give me a ballpark figure of how many for-hire drivers are actually registered with the city. I can't get my head around that.
Okay.
Just a guesstimation, just a guesstimation.
I'm recalling a 300 number.
Any other questions, comments? We have nothing more on the agenda? Anything else for the good of the order? All right. So we'll be adjourning, and just as a heads-up to folks, our Monday council meeting, our legislative, 6:00 PM, we've moved that business, what little there is, to 3:30, and there'll be a sign-up sheet, 2:30, online for people. And that's also in the notice that's going out. And we have public safety at 1:15 on Monday and briefing at 3:30. Everyone have a great rest of the week and weekend. We are adjourned.